Good evening. The regular meeting at the Southern Shores Town Council for August the 7th, 2018 is now in session. Before I ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence, I have two requests. First, out of respect for others, please refrain from talking to your seatmate or neighbor while council is conducting business. Take these personal conversations out of council chambers and that'd be fine. Second, please do not shout out or attempt to participate in a council debate or discussion, no matter how strongly you might support either side of an issue. I would much prefer not to have to ask anyone to leave the meeting. Make a lot better, a lot better evening for me. Please use the public comment period to express your concerns, opinions, and thoughts. I thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in a moment of silence. We have our proposed agenda. I move we adopt this agenda with the amendment of a new item A under Old Business of Counsel considering, consideration invoking a censure of Counsel McDonald for his unfounded personal comments made to Counsel Munason during the July 10th, 2018 council meeting, and for which she has yet to publicly apologize. Is there a second to this motion to amend the agenda?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Counsel McDonald, now's the time for you to publicly apologize if you so wish. By your doing so, I will drop my motion.
Aren't we supposed to vote on the motion?
No, I'm coming to that. I mean, I should give you the opportunity first. I have a second.
I mean, we should have the opportunity to vote on amending the agenda.
You will have.
We want to see if Councilman McDonald will apologize first, and if he does, then we don't go there with this adjustment.
I don't understand what you're asking, but you already voted on a censure, and it was not approved.
We did. That's right. I made the decision to bring it back for reconsideration.
Well, it's not on the agenda, and it's not being apologized.
I understand that. It'll be on the agenda, and I'm asking if you want, if you wish to apologize.
I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. Counsel, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda to reflect this change, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All who oppose, like sign.
No.
Motion passes. We have adopted an amended agenda. At this time, counsel, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, tab one. Basically, tab one is the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor of approving consent agenda, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have a, we have the consent agenda approval. Ms. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to recognize some folks who served on the planning board. Mr. Sam Williams, we'll start with you, Sam. I'll meet you down front. Mr. Williams, who served on the planning board for nine years, I think done an exemplary job, and I want to thank him for his service in person.
The Southern Shores Town Council recognizes your service as the town on the town planning board on March 25th, 2008, this year through June 30th, 2018. The town council and citizens of the town express our gratitude for your dedicated service. The town will always be considered duty, is not to volunteer to drive the survey of town unselfishly and make it a better place to live. Wish you the very best in the future, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Sam is joking about having a bucket of zucchini, is that wrong? He's taller than me. Anyway, thank you again, Sam. Is Carlos Gomez here tonight? Carlos is another planning board member who served, I think, for over two years, and I have a certificate for him, and I thank him for his service in his absence.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if I could ask a question as it relates to Mr. Gomez. He, I too appreciate his service, but I had previously asked if he still wanted to continue on the capital improvements committee. Councilman McDonald, did you ever have a chance to talk to him and ask him, or?
I have.
Does he still want to serve on the committee?
He, I, they let me out of department, too.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you again. Town Planner, Mr. Haskett.
Good evening, Wes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Have a brief report for y'all tonight for the month of July. There were seven zoning permits issued, 21 building permits issued. Those consisted of three new single-family dwellings, one remodel, two repairs, one repair remodel, three accessories, and 11 others. There are currently 20 single-family dwellings under construction in the town, and the total amount of fees collected in July was $11,382.36. With respect to the town Historic Landmark Commission, they'll be holding a meeting on August 28th at 9:00 a.m. The commission will be considering a request to designate 170 Ocean Boulevard, which is known as Pink Perfection, the Pipkin Flat Top House, as a historic landmark. And lastly, with respect to the planning board, they will meet on August 20th, and the board will consider VA-1806, a variance application submitted by Gray Berryman for a variance from Section 36-99 of the Southern Shores Town Code for the property located at 170 Ocean Boulevard. They also consider ZTA-1804, a zoning text amendment application submitted by the town of Southern Shores to amend the Southern Shores Town Code by amending Section 36-202, RS1, Single Family Residential District, to establish new lot coverage requirements as directed by council. And lastly, ZTA-1807A, text amendment submitted by the town to amend the Southern Shores Town Code by amending Section 36-132, Regulation of Structures and Uses Nonconforming Unless Council Takes Other Action Tonight As It's On Your Agenda. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
Just one. When was the next HLC meeting? Oh, God, April 28th, was it at 9:00?
The next one's August 28th.
August 20th?
August 28th.
August 28th at 9:00?
9:00 a.m., yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, counsel? Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. This time, I'll call on David Cole, our police chief. Good evening, David.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The report for the police department, July 2018, as you can see, we had 1,342 calls for service. We had 19 incidents. Two of those were larcenies, two fraud, one vandalism. We had one drug, three driving while intoxicated, one ABC, which is a alcohol violation. We had one drowning. We had two DOAs. We had one vehicle fire, and we had five incidents involving traffic, for a total of 19. Under the arrest, we had one arrest for larceny, one for drugs, three DWIs, one for the ABC violation, and five for the traffic, for a total of 11. We had 12 motor vehicle accidents for the month of July. Officers conducted 114 traffic stops. Out of the 114 traffic stops, they issued 61 written citations, another 37 warning citations. And our community resource officer, she issued 67 town ordinance violations. Most of those were for parking. Questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next report from our Assistant Fire Chief. Jay, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the privilege of presenting the report this evening. As you can see, it's another busy month of the fire department. 69 total calls. Six of those were fire-related, 45 rescue and emergency medical service calls, two hazardous conditions, eight calls for service, one good intent call, and seven false alarm or malfunctioning alarm calls. Of note of interest, we'll brag on the department a little bit. On Friday, July 27th, we answered, actually had five calls that day. Four of those were all within less than a 45-minute period. At approximately 1:15, we got a call to the station for a resident that had a malfunctioning smoke alarm. She was recently widowed and requested our service to come out and check the alarm for her. While en route to that, we were dispatched at 13, at 1:25 for a patient assist. At 1:28, we had to divert for a major motor vehicle accident with serious injuries. One victim was actually medevaced out. And then at 1:58, we also had a, another EMS call with chest pains, cardiac event. The department handled all four calls without asking for assistance from anyone else, and they were all answered in a timely manner. So, I think that's proof that the volunteer system is working well here in Southern Shores.
Remarkably well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions for Jay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Our Town Manager, Peter Vasco.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did want to acknowledge that your town attorney tonight is Robert Hobbs of Hornthal, Riley, Ellison, Malin. So, Robert will be serving as the town attorney for this evening.
Thank you.
First item that I want to report to you, the main complaint that Town Hall has been getting for the last three weeks are potholes on the town streets. The Public Works Department has been triaging fixing the potholes, and they're due, of course, to a cold winter and also the extreme amount of rain that we've had. They pop up every day, and we're triaging those for fixing based on public safety and doing the other operations of public works. So, they are being attended to, and we have had numerous calls about potholes, of course, across town. Some places are worse than others, and again, they're being triaged based on public safety as a priority. The mowing schedule has picked up since the end of the rain, of course, as the heat drives the growing grass. We are mowing, as you recall from summers past. This is a constant activity, a constant operation to keep the towns' green spaces down. I did want to report to you on the nature of your, the capital projects that the council has approved for the year. First off, the East Dogwood Trail Walking Trail, staff will be reviewing the informal bids for the trail on August 14th. Has been put out, and we have had a pre-bid conference with potential contractors that went well. Any contract award, as you know, will be transmitted to the council as well as reported to you at your next meeting, per your current policy. The Yopon Trail Improvement Project will be reviewing the informal bids on August 23rd. Any contract award will be transmitted to the council as well as reported to you at your next meeting, per policy. The tree removal aspect of that project, of course, has been on the plans now for two years. Those have been available to the public and to the council. There are some trees that will be coming in the curb there around where the bulkhead system is being replaced. And recall, this project was delayed for a lengthy period of time due to the fact that we had to get a camel permit, and it was a long time coming to be able to receive that permit. We have it in place, and of course, once the bidding, the bid is awarded, no construction can take place until October, when the moratorium is lifted for activities in the water. Yojuna Port Trail Improvement Project, we have, last week, we received the final subsurface geotechnical results. They've been, they are now being incorporated to the, the design of the, of the project. Hopefully, the design will be completed this week, and it'll be put out to the residents who own adjacent properties to the area, and then will be put out for bid, once we get comments and concerns from the, from the neighbors. So, hopefully, that'll occur in the next three weeks to be put out. I did want to remind that the, on fire department business, the fire department's architect, who's being funded, of course, by your appropriation for his work, is scheduled to review the potential building plans and a site plan with you at your September 5th meeting. He'll also have the drawings set up here in the room, two hours ahead of time, from 3:00 to 5:00, for the public to be able to come in and review those drawings that same day as well. And we'll be advertising that as soon as we receive the drawings in that, that particular day for the public to come in. He'll be answering any questions and concerns of the public that day as well, and of course, the purpose of him on the September 5th meeting is to get your comments and incorporate anything else into the final design and final site plan, and recall the timetable. He'll then put out the final, 100% final design and receive bids during the month of October, so that he can bring those bids back to you at your November meeting to consider, along with a financing package, so that you can make a decision on a new station, one way or the other. Also, that night in November, you'll have a conditional use permit application recommendation from the planning board, presumably, if, if all goes as scheduled with the architect. At this point, I just want to remind council, we're not planning on a October regular meeting. We've notified you of that twice before this year. So, the staff will not have any items of business for you for an October meeting, regular, excuse me, the regular scheduled meeting for October. All the items that we have for business will be on for either September or November. I did want to finally recap the lifeguard schedule for you under our contract for the remaining portion of the year. The hard stand at Trinity, I mean, excuse me, the Triangle, the Triangle stand will be removed later this coming, this coming weekend, and then this weekend. The hard stand at East Dogwood will come out the third week of August, and the last two stands will stay up through Labor Day. And of course, the lifeguards will be there conducting roving patrols on Southern Shores beaches through the middle of October. So, with that, that's an operational report. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that any of you might have.
On the fire department plans, when is it that our town engineers will have a chance to look at those?
He's going to be looking at them during the month of August, as soon as the, the stormwater plan and the wastewater plan are sent to him. He'll be looking at those prior to September 5th.
Okay, so, yeah, perfect.
Now, recall, under, under our current ordinance, he will need, he will have the opportunity to review those prior to their application for conditional use, well, at the same time that the conditional use permit is considered as well. So, that'll, excuse me, the site plan, as that comes in, he'll be reviewing all that as well. So, presumably, he'll have the opportunity prior to you to, you get, well, you probably will get them at the same time. We'll order them to you immediately, as, once I get them, but prior to your September 5th meeting, he should have an opportunity to be able to comment at that particular time.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else, counsel?
I would just report to you that Peter and I took a tour of the beach last Friday, was it? And pretty interesting, we had quite a bit of scarping or escarpments along the, particularly along the oceanfront, maybe 100 feet or 50 feet back from the ocean, on, on normal tide levels. But then, on some parts of the beach, some sections of the beach, as you go further north, we had escarpments that were very close to the dune line. Not into it, but very close to it. But overall, I'd say we're, we're doing better than some of the other jurisdictions as far as the escarpments and damage to the, to the beach itself. I'm, I'm keeping my fingers crossed and hope this keeps up, and we get able to get some, some sand buildup in front of those dunes during this, this coming year, before the, before the hurricane season actually gets here, next week, or whenever it comes. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Peter. Town Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have a report of, and then to say I've enjoyed working with Peter over the past few weeks with fire department contract, and my colleague and I, Andrew Howell, have made some changes which, and worked with Peter on that, and that's in your agenda package for review. But that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I have open general public comment. Karen Price. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Karen Price from 18 Ocean Boulevard, and I am here tonight to thank you very, very much for your help with the assistance you have given all of us at Southern Shores for beach nourishment last year. It has proven to be a big success. We're very happy, and the part of the beach that you all have helped us with is fabulous. So, we thank you. It's, it's just a pleasure to see people out on the beach again, enjoying it. People can put their umbrellas in the sand instead of on their decks. People can walk the beach and enjoy the beach. They can run, they can jog. Lifeguards can drive their little go-karts or whatever they are. They can drive them up and down the beach again safely, so it's been a big success, and I want to express my gratitude to you all, and on behalf, on my behalf and behalf of all of our neighbors. Thank you, and the rest of Southern Shores also, too, because everybody's out there and enjoying it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Van Price. Good evening, Van.
Van Price, 18 Ocean Boulevard. I am here also to thank you for all the diligence and the hard work that your staff and, and you all, as council members and mayor, did to ensure the success of the beach nourishment that took place last year. It was a pleasure to watch the operation in hand, and, and more importantly, what happened after. When I saw Chris coming, and it went out to sea, and, and all the high water and wind and everything that took place, and then later, Beryl decided to do the same thing. Without the beach nourishment, our dunes would have been hit by all that water, and instead, that's where you saw a little bit of the damage to the beach, but that's going to come right back. Grass is growing on the dunes, and more importantly, you can't find a place to put your umbrella, at least today, and some of the other days that I call Chamber of Commerce days. It's just been fabulous. We've been down here for a couple months, and, and I'm ready to stay a whole lot longer now that I'm not worried about the ocean taking my house away. So, thank you very much. I know all of Southern Shores is proud, and also the businesses should be very proud. I see a lot of people walking right across the street, going over to Steamers and Coastal and all the places that are right here, because it's so close, and so hopefully, that adds a little bit to the, to the pot that we all need to have, and, and all the places seem to be full every week. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and thank you for all your hard work, and thank you, Peter, for all you've done, and your staff.
Thank you, Van. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. I live in, on Dogwood Trail. Whenever my wife and I go out of town for an extended period of time, we always put our property on the watch list at the Southern Shores Police Department. We were recently gone for several months, and while we were gone, Officer Hines was looking around our property and noticed that one of our irrigation pipes was gushing water. He took it upon himself to find where the, the pump was and turned off the pump, so the water stopped. He notified our emergency point of contact, and we were notified, so we could take some action to get it fixed. And I'd just like to thank Officer Hines and the Southern Shores Police Department for all they do, not all, obviously, for law enforcement, but, but for such things as this property inspection when people are, are out of town. That's a big benefit, and I really appreciate it very much. So, I just want to thank particularly Officer Hines, but the entire police department. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure David Cole will pass that along to a really fine young man, by the way, Officer Hines. He's a head and shoulders guy all around. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Jim Groff. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Jim Groff from 102 South Dogwood. My wife, Bets, and I have lived in Southern Shores for 16 years. About three years ago, we moved to South Dogwood. It was a downsizing move. And I want to point out my qualifications to comment on what I'm going to comment on. I served on the Southern Shores Planning Board for several years in the early 2000s, actually chaired it for about three years. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, a Master of Science in Environmental Engineering. I'm a retired naval officer, a Vietnam vet, and over 20 years of construction experience. Not surprisingly, I'm here to address Dogwood Trail. That's where we live now. That's where we drive. That's where we bike, but we don't bike during tourist season. That's, it's a little bit too dangerous. And I, my comment is that I'm disappointed that the most recent capital improvements plan places Dogwood Trail in Group C. My interpretation of that, it's, before we do anything, Dogwood Trail, it's at least five years away. And I'm here to tell you, in my professional opinion, and it's free, by the way, that Dogwood Trail isn't going to last that long. You've got to do something about Dogwood Trail now. That's, that's your responsibility, and I know something about responsibilities. A simple repaving, in my humble opinion, would be a total waste of taxpayer money. It has to be dug up, new subsurface installed, curbs and gutters put in to, to control the water runoff, which is what's tearing it up right now, widened, and if you decide to put in a sidewalk, now, then would be the time to do it. That's the only fix for Dogwood that makes any, any, any sense at all. Right now, it's a minefield of potholes. So, there's no, in my view, there's no excuse not to do something with Dogwood Trail. And let me conclude by simply saying that sometimes you have to do by right, what's right. It's not always the most popular thing to do, but if it's right, it has to be done, just because it's right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Good evening, George.
Good evening, council, mayor. What a great day. George Berry from 239 North Dogwood Trail. I want to talk to you about alternate Route 12, also known as the cut-through highway. Said highway, if it's a residential road, but it's a highway right now. So, all this traffic is traveling up South Dogwood, East Dogwood, to Hickory, to Hillcrest, Seoch Trail, on to get onto 12. We haven't done anything about it yet. We've complained, and everybody's complained, and we're... We've complained, and everybody's complained, and we've studied and analyzed, but it is having a major problem, the traffic on the roads there. Now, South Dogwood's maybe a little wider than when you go up to, as an engineer, I've looked at measuring the roads up at Hickory, it's narrower, and even on Hillcrest, it's even, some places even very narrow, unless you get up near the, you know, what I call the continental divide by the, by the, uh...
Tennis court.
The tennis courts, it's nice and wide there. So what's happening is, we have a lot of visitors that don't know our roads, and when they see another car coming, they go a little bit more, they don't want to hit the car, they go off to the right, whether it's a truck or another car, and the other car's doing the same thing. So, the right wheels of both cars, as they come together, run off the road, and what do they hit? It's, after that, it's sand. So they're kicking the sand out, and if you have any water in there, and it's, it's flashing it out, so you have this dip along the edge of the asphalt, and that's happening on these roads. In addition, thank you for the potholes, I'm glad you're working that, but the whole road structure is, can't handle this traffic. It was never meant to handle this traffic. But we got the traffic, so we need to do something with it. So, I think if you look at East Dogwood, how it comes in close to 12, you actually have a shoulder, it's about three foot wide. You don't have any of that, there's, there's no problem there. You look on 12, they have a shoulder on that. We need to either widen the roads or take the roads and add a shoulder to them so that the cars can pass safely, not run off the roads, not destroy the roads, because he's right. They're not last, the roads aren't going to last much longer. They're just being beat up, you know what? So, I challenged the council and the town manager to come up with, and to come up with a plan to fix our roads, because we're stuck with this traffic right now. No solution. We got the traffic, so we need to deal with it. We need to deal with fix to widen the roads because they're going to crap. Okay? Any questions? Anybody? Take a look yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, George. This has been a recent conversation between the town manager and myself, where, um, he basically said what you just heard from Mr. Groff and, and Mr. Berry. We've got a situation with Dogwood Trail, especially South Dogwood, which gives a high volume of traffic, where we're at a point where it's kind of a, as Mr. Groff said, it's, it's throwing good money after bed to try and keep patching it, because the base is not there, and the, the wear is, is so great, and the road is so poorly built to start with, and we're going to have to really, really face up to the fact that somehow, we adjust our CPO, our, our capital improvement funds around so we can start, start addressing that, that issue. Don't know how we're going to do it, but it's something we can make happen, I think, if we put our heart, if we put our heads to it, and, and really work at it. We are aware of it, believe me. A lot of reasons we haven't addressed it probably more aggressively than we have, and I can, I won't get into those tonight, but most of you know what they are. At this time, um, we'll go into old business. I think I'm right about that. This is, uh, this is probably one of the more, um, choose the right word, I think unpleasant things I've done since I've been your mayor, or since you elected me your mayor. It's, um, it's not pleasant to call out a member of your own body to, and, and ask them to, to account for their, for their behavior. It's not, it's not a pleasant thing at all, and I don't, I didn't want to be a part of it, but it's, it's a fact, and, and it's, it's on us, and we have to, have to address it. The next order of business, of old business, is considering, consideration of invoking censure of Councilman McDonald for his unfounded personal comments made to Councilman Nation during the July 10th, 2018 council meeting, and for which he's not yet publicly apologized. Prior to continuing with the motion, I will call the town, town attorney to advise the council on excusal of a member from voting. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I thought it would be appropriate just to discuss a statute, uh, which is Section 168-75, which is your, uh, voting requirements as council members. And I'll just read part of it. "No member shall be excused from voting except upon matters involving the consideration of the member's own financial interest or official conduct or on matters on which the member is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234, 168-381D, or 168-388E2. In all of the cases except votes taken under GS 168-384, a failure to vote by a member who is physically present in the council chamber or who is withdrawn without being excused by a majority vote of the members present shall be recorded as an affirmative vote." So, and there's some other provisions that, that aren't relevant, but what I wanted to just bring that to your attention, um, this statute does require all members to vote on all matters that come before the council, um, except for the matters that I mentioned, and the most commonly used, uh, exception for the statute is matters involving a member's own financial interest, and that's, uh, used from time to time. But it, in order to excuse a member, uh, the council members would have, the, the council members, including the member, would vote, um, on whether or not the person should be excused from voting. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, the propos, the proposal, uh, that's been added to the agenda dealing with censure, in my view, would go to the official conduct exception to that. So, uh, the council would have a couple of options. One option would be to, um, vote, proceed with, uh, a, a discussion or any motion that may come about dealing with, uh, the censure matter, and not take any action with regard to voting, uh, as far as excusing from voting. The other option is the, the council has the option to, uh, make a motion and approve a motion to excuse Councilman McDonald from voting on the matter because it comes under the exception dealing with official conduct. Um, so, but, uh, in either case, uh, the council can consider a motion like that, uh, but I wanted to at least bring that to your attention as an option, uh, should you decide you wanted to, you know, wanted to consider that.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman McDonald from voting on the motion that we may make on this matter.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion, counsel, on this matter?
We're not voting on that issue tonight.
I'm sorry.
We're not voting on that issue tonight. It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, we are voting on it.
Oh.
We add it to the agenda.
I'm talking about, to vote on a specific motion on what?
We're, we're voting on, we're voting on a motion that was, whether we accuse you or excuse you from voting on this, on this question.
Oh, on this question?
Yes.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you. Counsel, I have here, uh, I'm sorry, this call for the, for the vote. All in favor?
All in favor of what? Repeat the motion, please.
I made a motion to excuse Councilman McDonald from voting on the motion, on the motion to censure him.
Okay.
And that motion was seconded. We've had one comment.
Go ahead.
Donald's fine with it. Um, I, at this time, unless there's further discussion, I'd ask for, I'd call for a vote. All in favor of excusing or excusing Councilman McDonald from voting on this particular question? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
All right. Motion was made and carried three to two. Sheila?
Could I ask a question of the, uh, of the town attorney?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what does censure mean in a case like this? What, what is, what is the definition? What are the consequences of any repercussions? I'd like to understand what censure is.
Well, I, I'm not aware of any legal consequences from a censure. I don't know that I have a precise definition, um, other than a, um, a statement dealing with or addressing, uh, the lack of support or, um, displeasure with a action or behavior of someone on the council in this particular case, but I don't have a precise definition for you. But I think it all would depend on the wording of the motion for censure as far as what exactly that would mean, because it can be defined, you know, in the motion as far as what the, what the censure would mean. But it does go to, uh, official conduct if, if the action that's being discussed had to do with action that occurred or behavior that occurred during a council meeting.
So, furthermore, can you explain to me what misconduct means?
The, uh, it could, it could be a number of things, but again, it depends on what the council as a group decides what conduct means and what it doesn't mean, and I believe that, um, that it all would, again, depend on the motion that is made as far as the description of what the person making the motion would say as far as what the conduct or misconduct would be. Welcome.
Counsel, I have your resolution here that I'm going to, uh, pass out to each of you. Should I read? I'll give you time to read those before I go any further, but I will, uh, I will move for a motion or an option of this resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Once you've read that, counsel, I'll give each of us a chance to comment if, if we I'm going to, um, excuse me. I'm going to share the, uh, resolution with all of you here. Uh, this is a resolution invoking censure of a member of the Southern Shores Town Council for improper meeting behavior. As you heard the attorney say, there's no, there are no ramifications of censure other than just the fact that council has, has observed action or behavior that was, we felt was inappropriate. Whereas a censure of a member of the Southern Shores Town Council serves as an official expression of pronounced condemnation and disapproval by the member of the town council for an improper, inappropriate action, including breach of meeting decorum. And whereas the July 10th, 2018 regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council, members of the council were engaged in debate of a motion to not adopt a proposed zoning text amendment, ZTA 1804, being considered as an item of business on the meeting agenda. And whereas Councilman McDonald, Gary McDonald, initially introduced a motion being debated, it being seconded by Councilman Fred Newberry. And whereas Councilman Christopher Nation, during the debate, spoke in opposition to Councilman McDonald's pending motion. And whereas Councilman McDonald, suddenly speaking again in support of the motion, spoke directly to Councilman Nation, saying, "How much money do you need to make?" Whereas Councilman Nation immediately responded to Councilman McDonald's statement to him, by twice denying he's making any money for this, and by twice requesting Councilman McDonald to retract his statement, to which Councilman McDonald refused to do. And whereas Mayor Tom Bennett, as the presiding officer of the council meeting, requested that Councilman McDonald apologize for his personal comments he made towards Councilman And whereas Councilman McDonald refused to apologize, only stating the truth sometimes hurts, as well as specifically acknowledging that the statement was not an apology. Whereas Councilman McDonald did not offer, nor has he since offered, to my knowledge, any evidence to substantiate, substantiate the truth of his statements, nor did he offer any evidence that the outcome of the passage of the zoning text amendment being considered was reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable impact financially on Councilman Nation. Whereas since the July 10th, 2018 council meeting, Councilman McDonald has not made any public protection or apology for his comments made towards Councilman Nation. And whereas a transcript of the relevant portion of the July 10th, 2018 council meeting is attached to the resolution. Whereas the Town of Southern Shores Code of Ethics and Standards of Conduct for Council Members prohibits for unpropriety and the appearance of unpropriety in all activities by council member, and was acknowledged and running by Councilmember McDonald on November 24th, 2015. Now therefore, be it resolved based on Councilman McDonald's substantial, unsubstantiated statements made publicly and personally to Councilman Nation, and his refusal, refusal to publicly, publicly retract them and publicly apologize to Councilman Nation and the citizens of the Town of Southern Shores, the Southern Shores Town Council does hereby censure Councilman McDonald for his improper and unsubstantiated statements made to Councilman Nation, thereby constituting improper behavior as a member of Town Council. I've shared that with you. As I said earlier, it's one of the most unpleasant things I've had to do as I've been your mayor. I don't want to be part of it, and I think it's unfortunate it happened. I would strongly encourage Mr. McDonald to make a simple apology to Mr. Nation, and let's move ahead. Let's move forward.
Mr. Mayor, there's some inaccuracies in this resolution. Taken out of context, uh, where you, one, two, three, four, five, paragraph five. Also, you stated for improper and unsubstantiated statements. Who's defining that? You as the mayor, or?
We're, we're discussing that tonight.
No, I mean, who's defining that? You?
Yes, I, I was the one that, that asked that, just prepared, yes.
To question another councilman is inappropriate?
Uh, not to question another councilman, but to make, make remarks, but make remarks that, that, that impeach him in some way, or say he's in for, into some sort of a financial gain.
And paragraph, first paragraph on the top, you said, "Truth sometimes hurts," as well as specifically acknowledging that the statement was, I don't remember acknowledging that. I would ask, you mean, really, you three were in here when I came to the meeting tonight? I'm guessing you were discussing this?
Never.
And came up, I mean, it's typed up and everything, Tom.
Right.
So, I would say you need to put this on the agenda for the next meeting, to give me a chance to, uh, respond.
The only response you have to make, Gary, is to apologize to Mr. Nation for your remarks.
You're asking for something that, you know, you've asked me that how many times, Tom?
I think we're going to be moving forward with this at this meeting tonight.
Well, I think that's inappropriate, but that's okay. That's my opinion.
Your thoughts are acknowledged.
I think the three, I think the majority of this council, I mean, just a little suspicion there, to have it typed up, and can you honestly say the three of you have not discussed this together?
I have not discussed it.
I have not discussed this resolution. We discussed your, your behavior with Mr. Nason and Mr. Connors.
That's inappropriate. That, that's the majority of council.
You didn't discuss it with me, Tom.
You didn't discuss it with me or Fred.
That's right.
Okay.
I tell you what, I have a real problem with this process. First of all, there is a provision for freedom of speech, and you, you three people are defining what's proper conduct. I don't think that's fair. I think you're ganging up on, on Councilman McDonald. This is autocratic, and I don't think it's right. And, uh, I think what you're doing is totally wrong. Wait a minute, I'm not finished.
I apologize, I thought you were.
Uh, my point is, it kind of inhibits me from speaking freely at these meetings and representing the people that elected me to do a job because I'll have the fear that I'm going to be censured because three people decide on the code of conduct, which I don't see in writing anywhere. I don't see that our freedom of speech should be impeded by three other people's opinion. And so I think this is a bad situation. I think you ought to drop it, or come up with a code of conduct and things that you can say and can't say, because I tell you what, this is discouraging to me. I can't speak freely in a meeting because I'm afraid I'm going to be censured or reprimanded or whatever. It's totally wrong. This is a democracy.
Yeah, I disagree. We, this has nothing to do with freedom of speech. I think it has to do with civility, ethics, and how you treat your fellow council member. But rather than debating this all night long, we have a motion on the table. I would like to go ahead and vote on it.
Can you put a comment, Chris?
Again, I just want to state for the record, you three have discussed this outside, which represents a majority of council, which is, am I, am I right in saying, Mr. Hobbs, that that is illegal?
Before Mr. Holland's answers, I can guarantee the three of us, I'm sorry, Mr. Hobbs, before he answers, I can guarantee you that the three of us have not sat down and discussed this together. Mr. Mayor has done his job, the mayor has done his job.
He discussed with you and Chris.
At different times.
We have a motion on the table. We, there's been no illegality here.
I'm not in that.
You are not going to take this and turn it around on us for doing something illegal. We have had Mr. Hobbs and Mr. Gallup involved in this process. This has been done legally and by the books from ground zeros.
You've had Mr. Hobbs and Mr. Gallup, and you've not contacted the other two council members.
I'm not answering your questions. We have a motion on the table. You read whatever you want into my, uh, my comments.
Well, I, I view it as, uh, totally unfair. I haven't been consulted. I'm just as much of a council member, and I have as much of a, uh, to hear my opinion as the mayor and the other councilmen. I have not been consulted. I think it's totally unfair, and I think, uh, I think there's a little conspiracy to gang up on Councilman McDonald.
We're not ganging up on Councilman McDonald, we're ganging up on that kind of behavior. Now again, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest you go ahead and have a call for a vote.
I'd also, may I, may I say something? At the night that, that we're talking about last meeting, we did talk about this at the last meeting, so there, this wasn't, this is not some big surprise. We did, we've already talked about it once in open public session, so I, I think that's important.
Yeah, but the thing is, you and the mayor talked, the mayor and Jim talked, but no one talked to me.
No, no, you were in the meeting last month.
Now, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about when this resolution was produced, there was some discussion, and the mayor admitted it, Jim admitted it.
There was a resolution last month also on this.
I had no part of that.
And I, Mr. Councilman McDonald can say whatever he wants, and I'm not going to address his comments while I disagree with him. I do think it's time we move on as a town. You have to decide, Fred, whether you thought what Councilmember McDonald said was appropriate for a council meeting. I can't. If you think that that's the way to act, and if you think that that's how you want to be treated as a councilperson, and if you want me to treat you that way, or other councilmembers to treat you that way, then that's fine, and that, that's, that's, that's your choice. But it was, this isn't brand new. We talked about it in public session at the last meeting. We discussed it, so we, this is, for all intents and purposes, a second reading. So I have no problem with it. I, I support Councilmember Connors' motion to vote on this, and let's move on. The town needs to move on.
Motion to adopt resolution has been seconded. Having read the resolutions, are there any, any further discussion?
Just one last comment.
Yes, Gary.
You guys, you have the right to do this, you just did it wrong. And it borders on illegal. You can't, you can't have a council meeting without contacting all five if you're going to have a majority.
You had a council meeting, I talked to each, each other.
You did.
You're making accusations that are not true. We, there was no council meeting.
Have you seen this document before tonight?
No.
You have not?
No, I have not.
Have you discussed it?
You're not turning this into an accusation against other council members. This night is about, this motion is about you, Councilman McDonald.
I understand that.
You're not a victim. I know you're trying to make yourself into a victim here.
Oh, no, sir.
You are not a victim.
No, sir.
So let's move on and vote. I, I don't want to discuss this.
I'm all for it. Let's vote and move on.
I am too, but I also like to point out, you talk about my conduct.
Listen, I appreciate your, your comments, Gary. I appreciate all of your comments very much, but I think Mr. Mr. Nason was definitely compromised by what you said in a, in a public forum venue at the last meeting. I think it was inappropriate. When you, when you start questioning someone's integrity by saying, "How much money are you, are you going to make from this particular, this particular zoning text amendment?" Then, and then, and then turn around and say the truth hurts? What truth hurts? There was no truth there that we can substantiate.
No one asked for that.
You didn't have to say that. That's all I'm saying. And you can apologize right then. At least we would.
I would, I would have loved it if you had just come even in a public or private session and moved on, but I can't help it that you didn't. So let's just move on from it now, and let's vote, and let's go.
We got other stuff to do.
I agree.
Counsel, I'd like to call, call for the question. All in favor of, of approving this motion to adopt, to adopt this resolution indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Mr. Newberry? Mr. McDonald? Not vote. Uh, motion's been made and carried, and we have a resolution officially censoring Councilman McDonald. Next order of business. Consideration of item B, consideration of ZTA eighteen zero seven and eighteen zero seven A. These were zoning text amendments applications submitted by the Town of Southern Shores and subsequent draft directives to amend Town Code Section thirty six dash one thirty two, regulations of structures and uses non-conforming. This addresses primarily the fifty-foot lots that became hundred-foot lots, and now it only becomes fifty-foot lots again. Council may currently adopt ZTA eighteen oh, oh seven as it is. We discussed this before and decided there were too many things wrong with that. Uh, we asked the council, we asked the staff to come back and give us a revised version of that, uh, which we, we cannot accept tonight, but which we can, we can talk about. May be adopted, ZTA eighteen zero seven A may be adopted only upon receiving a recommendation of the planning board and subsequently holding a public hearing. ZTA eighteen oh seven A is on the August twentieth, twenty eighteen planning board agenda for consideration. My recommendation, counsel, on this particular item of business would be to table it to the September meeting at the earliest.
I would agree with that. Do you need a motion on that?
I do.
Before you motion, do a motion there now, uh, do you want to set a public hearing for the, um, for, are we talking about the numbers eighteen dash oh seven A?
Yes.
So, uh, if you're gonna, if you have a specific date for that, then you could make a motion to set a public hearing for that date, and then refer the matter back, the, the revised, uh, draft back to the planning board for consideration and recommendation.
Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just one, one point of clarification. The revised, just to remind counsel that the revised version is, has been submitted to the planning board concurrent with this. So in accordance with your town ordinance, the thirty-day clock is ticking, and it is before the planning board on August the twentieth, I believe. So pending a resolution on that, I mean, a recommendation on that day, it would come to you on September fifth for public hearing, that recommendation.
So I would ask, we set a public, public hearing for this particular ZTA on, for August, the September fifth meeting?
Which, September fifth meeting, which you, you do have the thought, have the practice to do, have been in practice doing that anyway.
That's, I got you.
Right.
And I did confer with Ben this afternoon, uh, and he recommended that if you choose, uh, I guess the option of considering eighteen dash oh, oh seven A, that you proceed with a motion to set a public hearing for the meeting in September, and like Peter said, it's already going to be heading back to the planning board for review, and, and then you consider it after you get a recommendation back from the planning board.
Thank you, Robert. So I will, I'll reaffirm the fact that I want to set a public hearing for this particular ish item on, on September the fifth.
I think the advice from council is to go ahead and make, and move to do that at this time because of all the different angles of this, of this process.
I got it. I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for, uh, for September the fifth to discuss this, ZTA eighteen dash zero seven A. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion, counsel? Hearing done, I'd ask for a motion, I'd ask for a vote on that. All in favor? Indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody on board? I think all, all agreed on that one, Sheila. Under new business, uh, the first item, public hearing for consideration of LDA eighteen zero one, a landmark designation application submitted by Clayton, Clayton Small to designate one sixteen Ocean Boulevard as a historic landmark. Report from Historic Landmarks Commission Chairman Whitley. Good evening, how are you?
I'm good. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Um, our last meeting, I guess, was back in April. We've had a quiet summer, um, and we unanimously approved their, the Smalls' application to be, to have their house at one sixteen Ocean Boulevard be designated a historic landmark. I had to go back and look at the house a couple times because it really just kind of blends into the, to the landscape there. It's been in the family, I think, since the beginning, and we were all in favor of it. And that's all I've got to say.
Counsel, any more questions, Ms. Whitney? Could I, could I ask you a question?
Sure. I'm sorry.
What, what are the criteria as far as maintenance, upkeep, uh, those types of issues? I'm, I'm concerned about the, I went by and looked at the property yesterday again for the second time. I'm concerned about the overall condition of the property. I don't know, obviously, I can't tell somebody to paint their house, but I, I would say that, what, what are, what are the standards you would use as, as part of your, your task to say?
Well, the house exists now pretty much as it has all along, even when it was first built. Um, there's some very minor, um, changes that I noticed in the application. You can notice it on the photographs. But really, it's very similar to what it was when it was, you know, built.
As far as the structure itself?
Yeah. We don't, um, you know, it comes into, if they're going to drastically modify it, add to it, uh, you know, those are things we do agree on. We don't, we don't, um, control painting, we just don't, they just, um...
That was kind of just in my question. What do you?
I think Wes, you may have some more, more, there's, our guidelines are written down. I don't know them off the top of my head, but we refer to them when we have a meeting. We did discuss it, um, and if I had the pictures, you could see that the house does look very much the way it did back in the fifties and sixties. And we felt that that was a good candidate for this program.
Okay.
And perhaps, you know, the, the benefit of the, um, the, uh, economic benefit will help them to put more money back into the house to take care of it, or to do, um, some fixed, you know, repairs that may be needed.
Right.
But they can't dramatically alter it without, you know, changing the structure.
I just noticed the condition of the roof, things like that, which would tell me that the house maybe needs, is in need of some maintenance in order to, in order to be able to perpetuate itself in that location and stay there. That was my big concern.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, my thought was that it just kind of blended in, and that the repairs needed didn't jump out at me, and I would rather see that, um, there, being able to hold on to the property and make those repairs rather than sell it and maybe see another McMansion go up there.
Ocean Truck Mansion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think some of the minor modifications that I had noticed when I went out there was, um, as you guys discussed at the HLC, some soffits.
Right.
On the, on the house. And I think somebody else had mentioned, or maybe I did, or maybe I noticed and thought about mentioning, but they've got rain guards over the doorways now, so, but other than that, it seems to be, I, I couldn't tell anything. But I also, when I was on that property, I thought it looked weathered. Weathered, as, not weather beaten, but just weathered. And that's actually a term that one of your HLC, um, members used. Weathered is different from structurally unsound or something, and that's where the question would go to Mr. Haskett. Is there anything about that structure that you've been aware of that would make it inhabitable or unsafe in any way? I mean, there's a difference on how something looks and how something is.
Right, yeah. I haven't, the building inspector hasn't been on the property to look for code compliance or structural integrity or anything like that. What the designation is based on is the six different aspects that are addressed in the ordinance, which is design, setting, workmanship, materials, feeling, and association. The criteria that the Landmark Commission have, that their adopted criteria applies after you've adopted a structure and they want to make changes. Or once you've designated a structure and you want to make changes, then they have to obtain a certificate of appropriateness, and whatever changes they're making have to be in compliance with those requirements. So with respect to appearing weathered, or, um, you know, if it, if you're, there are thoughts or questions as to whether it's structurally sound, that doesn't really come into play from what's in the ordinance. So, no, there, that's not a consideration.
This is getting a little off topic here, but when you go back and look at an old house like that, it seems to me there'd be all kind of code violations as per modern codes.
Most likely, yes, sir.
But that doesn't, I guess they're grandfathered in then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah.
There's no heat.
Yeah, just, that's right.
No heat and no air. So it's, it's not a conditioned space, as we think of them today, but it's, but it's, but it's there, and it's, 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 it's living. It's staying, it's staying there. Hadn't come, hadn't crumbled.
I believe the, one of the, the applicant, Mr. Small, is, is here tonight. If y'all have questions for him, he can probably answer some of those questions. You all do need to hold a public hearing for the consideration, so.
Thank you, Wes.
Yes, sir.
Just one last closing remark about this. I, I was really encouraged to see the Galardia that are thriving there. That's what they call a painted daisy or something, and they're just thriving, and it's, but it's dry, and they love that kind of environment, and there's a ton of them there. I'm gonna look, come get some seeds this, with this fall, if I get a chance. Thank you. Any other comment, counsel?
Can I, um, I'd like to ask the applicant a question, if you have a moment, but I don't know if we should do that in the public hearing setting, which is fine. My, my question was, just simply, that, um, what made you want to join the program?
Well, as the application states, the property has been in the family since the cottage was built in sixty-four years ago. And as you can imagine, as time goes on and families change, it's, they're down to the third generation now. I mean, we have thought several times over the last twenty years about basically knocking the cottage down and, and rebuilding a different structure there. But I think as me and my two siblings, who are current owners of the cottage, have grown a little older now, I think, um, there's an awful lot of heritage that's built into that. a little older now, I think there's an awful lot of heritage that's built into that cottage. We keep log books. We have the log entry from the day the cottage was opened in June of nineteen fifty-four. And we have four volumes of logs, family entries of, over the years of people who have come and stayed there. So there's a, there's quite a lot of family history there now, and I think that as we've gotten older, it, it means more to us now than it did maybe twenty, thirty years ago. And then, you know, to address the comments that were made earlier about the, the maintenance that's required, I couldn't agree more. And that's, that's really the primary reason for this application because the, the family has made a conscious decision not to make any changes and now here came an opportunity to have an economic benefit by getting incorporated into the historic landmark program and that we could then use that, that economic gain to plow back into the cottage. We are, if we, if approved, we do plan on making some improvements that would be consistent with, you know, the architectural requirements that come along with the program, but, but it does need a new roof. It does need, it does need new siding, although the asbestos shingles are in great shape. They're faded, they're weathered, and so we would want to address those things once we, once we got in. So to answer your question, that's primarily the reason, because if, if the, if the, if the decision was to not to make any changes, why not be part of the historic landmark program? Because if, if we're not, then, then it, then it puts it into another, another round of what do we do with the cottage going forward? And it's really, you know, again, it doesn't have heat, it doesn't have air conditioning, it's not very marketable. So it's, it has some, it has a great intrinsic value, but what to do with that? So that's a big question right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open public, public hearing. If anyone else would like to say anything about this, to address this particular issue?
No, unless there are questions about it, legal questions.
Did anyone hear that? If anyone has any legal questions or concerns about this particular discussion, let us know that we can address it this time. Mr. Hobbs will address it for us. What's your pleasure, counsel?
I'd like to approve their application for designation as a historic landmark.
Do I have a second?
I didn't have my glasses on when I was making that motion. I'd like to include one sixteen Ocean Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
The address.
Thank you. I, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
I have one comment. I don't want to do anything to hurt the application or put the application in jeopardy, and I'll vote for it on one condition, that the prejudicial language against a protected minority class be redacted from the deed.
Well, I'm, I'm prepared to address that. The, basically that provision's been judicially redacted from all deeds in the United States under the US Supreme Court decision of Shelley versus Kramer decided in nineteen forty-eight, that specifically outlawed and, and made unforceable any restrictions that deal with certain racial groups as not being able to be owners within the subdivision. And so I've, I've been examining titles in North Carolina since the late seventies while I was in high school. You see these provisions come up from time to time and they are universally deemed as, as redacted and not within the document. And practically, there's really no way to, in a deed, unlike a car title, there's really no way to go in and actually remove it physically from the deed because it's an instrument of a conveyance, it's not like a car title. So no one in, in the legal profession sees that provision of any legal importance. It is, has historic significance of a, you know, a negative time, but as far as legal significance, it really has none. And like I said, the US Supreme Court has already spoken on the matter many, many years ago. In fact, they ruled on that two years before this deed was, was signed.
Okay. Can it be redacted from the application?
Well, I don't think that the, I guess the application includes a copy of the deed. Again, you can choose to do that if you, I mean, you're not really voting on the application, you're voting, I mean, you're voting on the ordinance and the ordinance, to my knowledge, doesn't refer to that provision. So really what you're, I mean, the applicant brought in the application, the applicant has what he has and that's a deed from nineteen fifty. They didn't have any control over what was placed in the deed and your, your, your ordinance doesn't, I mean, it refers to the deed but doesn't address that provision specifically. And like I said, that provision has absolutely no force of law in the United States.
I understand. That also comes up in, as I recall from the Civic Association days, comes up in restrictive covenant sometimes also. That was the first time I ran into it and it was clearly made, it was very clearly, the point was very clearly made that that has no force in law, just like Mr. Hobbs was saying. So unfortunately, we, we have to run across that every now and then.
Any other comment they'd like to make? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Counsel, we need to, we need to make a decision on this. I just need to make, you made a motion, I think, Jim, earlier?
Yes.
Would you repeat that motion for us?
Yes, probably for the best. I'd like to make a motion that the application for landmark designation of the property at one sixteen Ocean Boulevard be accepted and approved.
I think I've already seconded that.
You did.
Counsel, all in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chris? Aye. Any nays? No nays. Motion was made and carried. I think it was five to nothing, as best I can count. Item B under new business. Thank you, by the way, Mrs. Whitley. And thank you, sir. Appreciate your time tonight. Consideration of draft fire services contract effective July first, twenty nineteen. Would you like to address this with us, Peter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the council had discussed on previous occasions, it was the consensus that you wanted to see a draft proposed contract come in before, so you could look at it before anything was considered regarding the current architectural consideration for a new, new building. So the fire chief and I have spent several months meeting and going through this particular structure and tonight I have given you as part of tab four, the fifth document and a long, a string of historical documents showing you the contract history with the fire department, the Southern Shores Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., since two thousand eight. This would be a contract, if you were to adopt a new contract, that would be in place July one, two thousand nineteen. So on the current contract we have in place now, fire services are being provided through June of next year. My comments tonight are that the fire chief and I will be meeting tomorrow again, and if you have comments, concerns, and questions of the chief that, that haven't been answered in this draft, I will take those down. And the deputy chief is still here as well to take them down. He can't, I don't think he's prepared to answer any, but I'll be meeting with the chief again tomorrow and it's the hopes that, that, of course, the fire, the fire department leadership hopes that the council takes this seriously, the, for the time that, that we're talking about. Again, November is when you will be considering a finance package and whether or not to continue on with an appropriation for a new building. So I think the, the leadership is very interested in probably attending to all that at one time in the meeting, I'll just say that upfront. But you did want to see this ahead of time and, and this is the product that we have come up with. My first comment is this does not obligate the town to, to fund debt service for a new building. This is strictly for fire services. There are contingency items in the contract that speak to situations where the council may have approved funding debt service for a new building. But this contract does not obligate the town of Southern Shores to build a building. You'll have that decision in November as a separate decision. And again, I can't answer the question of how much it's going to cost, I can't answer the question of what the debt service is going to be. The architect has come before you and said he will hopefully have a figure, an estimate in September, but he will not know for sure until we get the bids in, which will be prior to your November meeting. The two major concessions in this draft that I'm giving you tonight are two that probably would not have occurred five, six, seven years ago. The first is the method of compensation. That is a major change in this draft and one that the fire department has conceded on. In this draft, no longer would the annual appropriation be determined by a portion of the town's property tax rate and tax base. That was the formula in the two thousand nine contract that is in place right now. This particular draft requires that the fire department submit an annual budget and that you review that annual budget and make an appropriation based on your determination of what they need. The compromise was a base compensation language. It creates a base budget. So the way this is drafted now, if there is a base compensation that's approved in year one, then that would be the starting point in year two, base budgeting for operations. And I'll just comment on that again in a second. The second major concession, which is paragraphs fifteen and seventeen of this particular contract, is that no longer is there an elaborate and complicated way of determining what entity gets what percentage of the assets if the fire department folds. That's in the current contract. Taking that out, it's, it's complicated, it leaves the fire department with some rights to make basically decisions from the grave. That's been taken out. What's in the draft now is that in the event of default and termination of the contract, under most circumstances, if, if the fire department is no longer exist and no longer can provide fire services, the fire department is contractually obligated to convey indeed over to the town of Southern Shores, all real and personal property. So that is a new concession and one that the fire department has conceded on to, to get this in play. The, going back to the compensation arrangement, under paragraph eleven, that is where that is described, and that's on page seven of the draft. There, I did want to disclose to you, there is one sentence in that paragraph that the fire chief and I will try to reword and reclarify. It is confusing and it does not, I don't think, reflect the intent of both parties, so we're going to go back and present you with another. And that's the last sentence that talks about base compensation. Base compensation does not include debt service that you approve. Debt service is something extra that the council would approve. If they have to borrow money during the year and want you to fund that, that's something extra. And then the intent is that once debt service goes away, that's no longer part of the base compensation. So that sentence will be rewritten. And it also is, is confusing with regard to debt service for a new fire station. None of that comes into play, of course, unless you make the decision in November to actually fund the debt service. So that'll be rewritten and clarified. The, I did mention to you, there were some provisions in this contract that are contingents, contingency provisions in case you do approve debt service for a new fire station. And those primarily deal with the right to use part of the town's property, which is part of the property we discussed with you in the past as far as an easement on current Southern, um, Public Works property. And then in exchange for that, they would, the town would have the right to use the, a portion of the East Dogwood Fire Station property for storage of inert material in the, in the rear and also one of the bays. So that's in the contract as well. So those are all contingencized, of course, on whether or not you approve a new fire station, the debt service for fire station in November. Those are the main areas that are different. The rest of the contract is pretty much the same as the two thousand nine, two thousand nineteen contract. And I do want to restate that the fire department is, they know the, the conditions in the contract and they have, the, they have not voted formally to approve this. I think what they would like to do is, is wait to see council's actions in November with regard to debt service and also with regard to conditional use permit for the site. So I'd be glad to try to answer questions now, and if you have questions, I can take those to the chief and discuss them if there is something about the contract. And if the council wants to make firm directives on, on the contract itself, then the council can certainly take action to do that.
See, I have a question.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Fred.
The compensation sounds to me kind of open-ended. When we had the base of what, five forty-five, nine fourteen from year to year, basically, I guess there were some minor adjustments to it. We could budget pretty easily for what the town would be spending for our fire services. But under this new system, it seems like we're going to have to pretty much review it every year and come up with a budget if we can support it. But if we can't, what are we going to do?
That's a decision of the council and again, it is tied to.
Do we have to look at other towns for services or?
I'm sorry.
Do we have to look at other towns for services? I mean, if we can't afford our own volunteer fire department, I mean, what do we do? I mean, it's kind of open-ended right now.
The council would make the budgeting decision each year on whether or not it could fund the fire department for that particular year and it would just be a, a matter of budget negotiations. That's how, how municipality and the county deal with volunteer fire departments.
Yeah, I, I understand that it's always negotiable, but there's no, there's no base. There's nowhere to start in this.
You would be starting each year at the base budget, as I described. Whatever you awarded the previous year would be the starting point.
Okay, where would we start the first year?
As it says, right here.
From this base amount here?
As it says right here in the contract on, on paragraph eleven, you would be starting at the base compensation that you've awarded this year.
Okay. All right, that, that makes better sense then.
Is your concern that, that, that year to year might go up a lot?
Dramatically, yeah. We'd either have to.
If they come, if they come in here with a dramatically increased budget, this council would have to make a decision at that time. Yes, sir.
Well, to add to that, you have in here, page four, number eight, strategic plan. Is there a strategic plan in place right now to get that, that would give us an idea of what's coming besides the building?
There is not a plan right now. And, I mean, he's going to produce a plan pretty quick, but basically what you're looking at in a plan is when is the next fire truck company to come online? That's what the plan is.
And I don't know what Fred's thinking, but what I was, when he was talking, I was thinking that, okay, we do a fire station to the tune of however many million dollars and then are we looking at one year later adding a new truck? Where are we in that state as far as equipment and so forth? And, you know, what, who knows what the state is going to say you need to have.
We, I'm sure we'll know pretty quick, but it, the bottom line is, you would know during budget time whether or not they're actually requesting debt service for a new fire engine for that year. And if you say no, just like you could say no for anything on your budget, then they would certainly have to step back and decide whether or not they could continue.
I understand.
Yep.
And I like the idea of a strategic plan. It really would be nice to have a estimate of when we're going to be facing other costs besides just a structure.
Yep, I agree.
Which, which they can, they can project, I think, pretty accurately based on the mileage and the age of the equipment they have. In the few conversations I've had with Ed over the past year, I get the impression that, I'm not going to speak for him, but I get the impression that he's comfortable in being able to manage his budget internally to be, and be able to provide when he has to for this, for this new equipment. That's, that's the feedback I've had in personal conversations. And I trust him to know what they can do and what they can't do. But I, what Peter's telling us, it's going to be up to us to make the final calls whether we want to see, see his, his annual operating cost go up or down, or stay where it is.
Yeah, and I'd just like to comment on the existing budget. Nothing prevents the fire department from coming in and making a request over and beyond the tax rate computation. If he walked in here tonight or in budget time and said, regardless of what the tax rate computation is, we got to have a new ladder truck and it's going to cost X, the council would be faced with discussing that. And this council, the A council, eight years ago, did make an adjustment in, at one point in the contract amount. So that was over and beyond the initially agreed upon tax rate. So it's all up to the council each year anyway to discuss what's needed. If, if the fire department comes in and says, we got to have this, then it's, we'll face that regardless.
I understand that. I understand all that. That's why I said the strategic plan is important. That way we know what's coming.
Yeah, and that's why we put it, I put, I made sure that got in this contract.
So that, you know, it's not like they come in and say, okay, we need a ladder truck. We know that's coming years out and you can plan for that.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned in your initial intro-
Yeah.
That, so you, you've worked on this with, with the chief and then it's the, the fire department board now has, has this to consider? And then, my, my understanding correct that, that should we decide in November to go forward, there will be tweaks to this document to refine it in addition to the one that you had mentioned, some language?
Mm-hmm.
So is there any, I appreciate you putting together the draft. Is there any detrimental effect to waiting until November when we have the information for the cost of the station and we know what we're doing with that? And then the board has had a chance to, to look at this and digest it and kind of comment on, on the work to date?
Yeah, my response to that is no, there's no detriment to, to waiting because it's not, we're covered until June 30th, 2019 under the existing contract. I got the feedback from talking to y'all here in a meeting, you didn't vote on it, but it just, that was, the feedback I got was everybody wanted to see this prior to the time that you wanted to go sit down with them and at the November meeting.
This is, this is a great, this is good, yeah.
So, so they, they, again, we'll, we'll make that tweak and anything else that comes up, Ed and I can constant dialogue about it. Now, what, I will comment on what you said in the beginning of your comment. He is getting consensus from individual board members as he goes through this. So that, again, they have not sat down to vote formally, hey, we're going to approve this document or anything. They want to make sure that the council was on board. I think is the way we're doing this with. And recall too, there's another board. I'm not sure if it's the same board or a different board owned by the fire department, but it's the Fire Service Real Estate, Inc., is the other entity that owns the real estate. So that board, of course, has to vote formally as well.
So you, I guess you need us to give you an-
If you have, I think what I'm looking for is-
An affirmative that we agree with this and it's good?
You really don't even have to do that tonight. I think what Ed and I are really seeking is, or I'm seeking, is if you have something that's glaring, go ahead and tell me. In any time, that can be done at any time, so that I can approach Ed with that comment. Now, if something that's really glaring and the council needs to make its, a majority decision, you know, I'd be seeking the council to tell me that, stand firm on that or let's change that, and I need to take that. But if you've got something glaring right now, any questions, concerns or comments, I can take those to the fire chief this week in my meetings with him.
I do not have anything, and I would actually feel a little more comfortable voting on this after FSRE and fire department folks have looked at this, after the negotiations and contract talk and all has run its course with them.
And as Peter said, there's no, there's no urgency right now because this, the contract we're under is good through mid-year of next year. So we're not, we're not looking at any pressure on us at this point in time.
Right.
I think the thing I would encourage each, each of us to do is to read through it carefully and see if we have things that we think are questionable or we aren't, aren't, feel comfortable with, and share them with our town manager, he can go back and talk to the fire chief about them.
One piece of information that I think Councilman McDonnell was alluding to that I think would be helpful is a general idea of what kind of heavy expenses you're mandated by law to incur. You know, like, once a fire truck gets to be so many years, you're supposed to buy a new one. I, I don't know if that's a factual statement or not, but that's the impression I'm under, and it would be good if we had some kind of idea of, like, coming down the road, what are these major expenses that are mandated versus a desire by the fire department? Not that we're going to cut out the desires all the time, but-
And, and I agree with you, Jim, but the ones that the state changes from time to time, these guys don't know about at all. I mean, they just come at them blind. So they, they get blindsided just like we will.
Yeah.
But, you know, they do know when they're going to need a new engine and when they're going to need new, you know, outfits, whatever. So that's what I'm talking about, putting in that strategic plan, and I do like that.
Anything else, council?
Does any sense of, the chief got any sense or give you any sense of whether or not his boards on board with this?
Yes, they're on board with this concept that we have drafted, but the chief does want me to state, I think Jake, the deputy chief would back me up on this, that the two boards would like to see the council consider everything at one time, basically. But everything in there so far is agreeable to everybody.
So if, if we just didn't, at this point, if we tabled it or just didn't act on it, the thought would be that come November, we'll get some numbers for the station?
Yes.
And then at that point, would you, and then the, the boards for the fire department would have had a chance to review it. In November then, would two different drafts be in front of us, one with the station, one without, to consider? Or if there's no station, then we've got time we could deal with it?
If there's no, if there's no station, we have time to deal with it. Because you, we wouldn't have to do anything decision-wise until the spring, budget planning for next year for fire services.
So you need us to give you a, like, in practice, you, you said we can change anything in here at any time?
Between now and the time that we adopt, that you adopted, certainly.
Generally, it's, we're, I'm good with it.
Well, realistically, we can, we can talk about this till next April.
Right.
If we have to, or maybe-
But we don't want to hold the fire department-
Under contract.
Again, you're right. If, if you, if the council were to approve debt service for a new fire station in November, I think they would be expecting to have to sign something pretty quick.
No question about that.
Especially since there are provisions in here that deals specifically with the construction, like the easements.
The easements.
You're right.
I would also like to thank the town manager, Mr. Hobbs, and everybody else working on this. It's a complicated mess. It's, it takes a real, it's a real challenge to wrap your head around all this.
Any other thoughts, council? If not, I'd make a motion, we table this for discussion until, for discussion in November.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Can you, can you say that we generally agree with this?
You could add that to my, my motion, sure.
Any opposition to that?
I think as long as we-
So you'll have that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe we should say contingent upon what the fire department comes up with?
Well, this is, they were involved in this.
Right. And general, yes, generally, yes.
So the motion, as I understand it, will be that the council in general, or in concept, agrees with the draft so far in that it's tabled until November, at least.
And look forward to working with them in the future.
And look forward to working with the fire department in the future.
Thank you, Peter. I'll favor that motion that Peter just gave us. You okay by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Let me go back to my agenda here. Yeah, thanks, Gary. The last item on the, on our new business is the trash and recycle cans lining NC-12. This was asked to be placed on the agenda by councilman Newberry, and now I turn the floor over to him.
Okay. The reason I asked for this to be on the agenda was I've gotten comments from several people about not only, one, the trash and recycle cans being left along NC-12 and Ocean Boulevard and other streets as well, but also the inconvenience of having two different days to carry cans out and bring cans in. And I think the inconvenience has caused probably the first problem with people just say to heck with it and just leave them out there. And if they ever take them in, they take them in both at the same time like they've always done in the past. What I would like to do is for the council to ask the town manager to look at other options for consolidating trash and recycling to the same day rather than having them split as they are now. I noticed he did give us an option of taking, getting a public works person to go out and pull cans in and, I mean, that's certainly an option, but are there other options such as other contractors that could provide recycling services on the same day as we're getting trash services? Or could the existing contract be modified so that the existing trash contractor who also does the recycling pickup, pick up maybe much earlier in the morning? I understand the, the problem has been a limitation of resources to do it on the same day. So I guess my question is, are there other alternatives that we should pursue?
In response, the, we have, I have met with Bay Disposal on the, whether or not we could go to another day, and that would take, going through this particular cycle, and they would look at it next year. They assured me that we could do that. We could look at it next year and see. The challenge is that Bay Disposal serves a lot of clients here, just like the other two providers do too. They also pick up our garbage, so the time shift is not possible without us putting trucks on the road at six and seven o'clock in the morning at the same time, both garbage and recycling, they're different trucks. We get complaints in town hall about the time, we get complaints in town hall about the number of trucks on our small streets blocking traffic, all during the year, we've gotten that. In talking to the providers and in talking to the other municipalities, my guess is if it went back out, it would be, we would be paying about $60,000 more than what we're paying right now. We're realizing a third, almost a $30,000 savings. And of course, this is, what we're paying now is about $14,000 more than what we budgeted last year. So we're enjoying a huge budget savings. At the same time, we continue to work with the property owners in educating, especially the ones where I'm getting, I got one, I've only received one complaint since the inception of the new day. One complaint at town hall, and that was from somebody who did not live on NC-12, and that was about the number of cans and recyclable cans on 12. And that particular issue, we work with the agents and work with the owners, we do it every year. And those cans, I've seen the same cans out no matter what day. I, I, I would submit to the council that having been here almost nine years now, there are going to be cans out there every single day of the summer. And I don't know any other way to get them off that road except for manually pulling them back like some of the other towns do. Nagseth has a service to do that. That's the option I gave you to get them off of 12. I would just recommend that the council allow staff to continue to explore and to continue working with the owners, and I'll do as Mr. Newberry suggested, and continue to work with Icaria about alternatives. I mean, we're, I'm in constant contact with, with them and I'll continue to do that. There may be a situation down the road where there's new technology and they can use the same truck or trailer or whatever, but we do get constant, not constant, but we get sporadic complaints about truck noise and trucks blocking traffic if they're garbage and recycler trucks on the same day. It's an, it's an issue, and looking back over the minutes at this town for the last 20 years, it seems like it's never gone away. It's always been an issue.
How do other towns along the Outer Banks deal with recycling specifically?
There are two municipalities that provide, that, that have recycling by subscription, which means that the residents may subscribe directly to the recyclable, recycling company and pay a fee each month to have their recyclables picked up. Those are two of them. Another town picks up its own recyclables and hauls them to Chesapeake to a recycling yard, and a recycling company picks up only on the beach road, on the east side of the beach road. And another town picks up similar to what we do. Bear in mind, this costs the town about, this is in our budget at $156,000 each year to provide this service. We get back in the form of a credit by taking it out of the landfill, about $60,000 of that. So there's about 90-some thousand dollars of expense there that we eat.
So by moving to the Wednesday, you were able to save a third of it?
Yes, of the recycling call. Oh, well, we were able to save $30,000 over what the, the next bid, the lowest bid was, which was the current recycler. Recall in, in our, in the town practice, we do, we could have extended it, extended the current, the, the previous carrier. I got so many complaints and there were so many performance issues, and it became obvious to us, me, that they really didn't want to do it, and that came out in what they bid, when they bid. So that one, I don't even think we could probably talk back to the table if we did go back out. And then there's only one other game in town that could haul it, collect it and haul it. So after talking to our collector and them and other towns, I fear we'd be looking at a huge increase if we tried to switch to another day at this point.
But you've only received one complaint since the new recycling schedule was implemented?
Since, one complaint since it was implemented. I had several comments prior to that about that's going to be inconvenient for me, I don't want to have to walk it out on a Wednesday, et cetera, but since we instituted it, only one complaint.
Well, I understand you said several, but-
Yeah, I have said several.
But it's hard. I mean, that's, I'm not saying this critically, but it would be good to have them go ahead and relay it to the town so he can keep some records as to how many people.
I mean, if people won't go to him, I-
I mean, if people won't go to him, I can't help it, but they come to me and I, you know, I listen and I bring the information back.
Well, it's hard to quantify that, though. If somebody comes up to me and makes a complaint about something, it's, you know, I, I think I should go ahead and relay that complaint to the town so that it can be documented, give them the name and number. I, I don't know, I'm just trying to-
A lot of people want to remain anonymous, they don't want, they don't want their name revealed. And I, I protect their privacy. It's not their voice, so to speak.
Well, I won't go there, but it's very difficult to quantify how many complaints we're getting unless they're going through the town, you know, because I can sit here and say-
Well, I'm sorry, I can't help that, but I'm just telling you, I've gotten several complaints. I didn't say I've got hundreds of complaints, but I've gotten several complaints.
Well, that's interesting that you said that, because the town staff has kept a record of complaints about the previous contractor who provided that service to us. And Peter can tell us what the numbers were there and the-
Well, I can tell you that there were three hundred, I've got 331 pages of complaints here that were for the period December 2016 through June of 2018. Eighteen-month period. Some pages have multiple complaints, and what we've done is documented the call-ins. And Cynthia was very busy each day. So that's all I can say, the, the performance issues or missed spots, cans being swung, not picking up, that sort of thing. And we tried to work our way through those eighteen months, and we still got this many documented complaints. It was obvious to me that we couldn't move on with that. So that's why a change was sought, and it was to the benefit, I believe, of the town with that kind of savings. Again, I've just gotten one complaint. The things seem, I know we had a missed can last Wednesday, or two missed cans, I know that, and we're still checking the tape on that, the video, to see what in the world happened, why they missed one or two last Wednesday. But for the most part, I feel like we've got the best carrier, the best service, and, and we'll continue to work with the owners. NC 12 is the high spot, and Ocean Boulevard is the high spot as far as visibility, no doubt about it.
I mean, Fred, I, I mean, I see a lot of cans around too, but, but actually, in a weird way, I, I actually don't, NC 12 is, you know, in some ways less important. I drove down Skyline after the trash was picked up, and it was, this was at five o'clock, you know, on, what was it, that Monday? Every single trash can was out. Now, on NC 12, you've got room to move around. On Skyline, when you have cans on both sides, you are literally down to a one-lane road and folks, and kids and families are going down to the beach. So I share your concern, but I actually am more concerned about the small roads because, because those get so choked down. So I support Peter's emphasis on educating folks, but there's some, there's some full-time folks there too, and they're not, they're not rolling them back either.
Yeah, the one part of this discussion that's kind of concerning to me, though, is devoting town resources to pulling cans back out of the right-of-way. First of all, pulling them out of the right-of-way is not stopping the visual blight. They need to be pulled all the way back to the, to the house or wherever their permanent storage is. So I wouldn't want to see the town devoting resources to that. We just need to keep educating the owners and getting the owners to, you know, take care of it however they want to do it, having the renters do it, or they physically go out and do it, or whatever.
I think this change is hard, I, I don't diminish that. I, I can say for myself, I've forgotten to take it out once or twice because of it. And getting onto a new schedule isn't easy, but maybe we could wait it out a little bit and see if folks adjust in terms of the amount of cans. And, and potentially revisit it at the new contract time, I'm not against that. I, I like it on the same day if it can be done also. But if it saves $30,000, then I like that too for the sake of the town, so.
With the finance officer and I continuing to talk to them, I assure y'all and Councilman Newberry that we're continuing to try to seek ways to handle cans, period. Ideally, if it was one truck that could dump both cans, we could work it out, no question about it. But it's not. Recyclables have to go into another, another truck.
Any further discussion about this, counsel?
I waited a long time.
Yes, sir.
But I waited the whole time. We still have the issue, and we still have trucks on the road. I mean, they still block our traffic. And I was one of the two that they didn't pick up last week. And I did call. The, the issue I see, though, now, and I have ridden Dogwood and Woods Road Trinity and Chickahawke and all those roads, the issue I see now, and the reason I rode those roads was because I came down 12 from Chickahawke to here. There's 51 recycles that were out there on Monday that are out there today. What they're doing is putting them out on the, when they take their trash out on Sunday night and just leaving them. The same thing unfortunately is happening in our neighborhoods. So do we need to look at, I mean, I know our code doesn't give you any authority right now. Do we need to look at changing the code so that there can be some restrictions? Or what, what do we need to do? I think you need, if you could bring us something back, charge the people that we have to pull their cans off the road.
I think it gets a little more complicated than that, though, because if we do it for the folks on NC 12, why not on Duckwood's Drive?
Duckwood's Drive had cans sitting out yesterday. And I'm saying, do we look, what do we need to do? You know, I'm not, I'm not for town people going and pulling their cans back.
Yeah, I'm not for that either.
But if we do that, I'm for charging people to do that. So, you know, we need some options there because truly, like Chris says, it's a safety issue. Because if you knock one of those cans over with an automobile at night on 12 or in a neighborhood, you know, you're gonna do, we're gonna have damage to a vehicle and that kind of thing. So something we need to look at. And 30,000 is not one-third of our cost, by the way. It was 30,000 savings over the last year.
Didn't we used to have a system of finding people if they didn't carry them in within a certain time?
The ordinance used to say shall instead of should.
Do we need to change that order?
I can, I think everybody here who's lived here for 30 years can comment on that. But basically, the town, the code enforcement officer and myself have discussed this many, 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 many times. What it would result in is me getting about 50 phone calls each pickup day. Why aren't you doing that, why aren't you sending him a letter? And then we'd have to send out 50 letters a day in order to make it work. And then where, what have we got? And then somebody goes home for two days, and I, that's the way it happened, it happened before. So I will say this, having researched it a little bit deeper, the municipalities who own, that own their own cans, and I'm not saying that's down here because I didn't talk to anybody down here about this, that's easier. Because then you can tag a can, it's sitting out there with a red tag, and if you see it again, we just pulled a can in, our can, the town's can in, and that person has no can. And find them at the same time, and they have to pay the fine to get the can back. So that's an idea, but that's only if we owned 2,394 cans.
Got about ninety bucks a piece.
There's no right answer, I know that, but I think a bigger issue is gonna be when the wind starts blowing, right now it's calm, we're gonna have trash up and down our streets.
Sure.
And I think that's an issue.
Well, but, but part of this too is, is a convenience factor. So if we pick up, in the summer, we pick up trash twice.
Well, it is.
I mean, and so, so, you know, so you're seeing cans on, on the street. I'm not suggesting we get rid of it, but it, but you're seeing more cans too with that. So if you, if we're, the goal is to just get rid of cans, if that's the primary goal, the view of cans, you get rid of recycling, you get rid of the second pickup, and you've just got, got a good deal of your cans. But I don't think that's the best for the town. I just think that that's where the balance is really hard. I don't want to get into some rollback program, I don't want us to be a police, a police that can police. I just feel like we've got a better-
We did that.
Yeah, I, I, it's just-
Well, I mean, just an example of us, what we're trying to do now. We, obviously, we have a dialogue with each of the larger rental management companies. And we see the problems, obviously, we see them every day. And I just conferred with one of them yesterday, you know, to remind them, do you do understand? Oh, yes, we do. And of course, they re-explain to me how their tenants are asked to pull cans back. And as I think Council McDonald said, they, they don't, they're not going to. They're putting them out there one time, and that's when they're full, and that's because they need a trash can. So hopefully, they need a trash can or recycling can bad enough to pull it back, is the hope. But y'all, I've seen them sit out there for seven days.
Yes.
And-
And that's what's happening now.
Yeah, I mean, they, but that's garbage, that's trash cans as well. You know, so it's everything. So what we do is try to confer with the owners, we try to confer with the rental companies. When a can blows over, David and his staff discretionarily pick the stuff up if it's a blight. So that's the way we've been handling it, and again, we're trying to educate as to the time. And I would just, I'll continue doing that, but again, I, I hear you, and I'll try to see what we can do and come up with some ideas. I don't know what the answer would be on pulling the cans back, other than education.
I think this is a very frustrating conversation to have. I've heard it going on for more than 20 years here in town. But I, I don't know, councilman, do you have any recommended action requests, or?
No, I just, like I said, I'm just asking for options.
I'll continue to, we'll continue to brainstorm it.
Okay, great. I wish I did have the answer.
This is a motion, counsel, I'd say let's move on to the next subject, which is general public comment. Three minutes per speaker. If you want to go sign up, you can do that. Oh, you may not be able to make it, Ms. David really feels generous. You can just give it to me. Thank you. We're about to set a record for getting out of here in less than three hours, guys, I hope you all realize that.
Not done yet.
George Berry.
While you're driving down the road, you're dodging those trash cans too. They're like on both sides, and it's harder to drive, and you're probably gonna knock a few over. But I have a, some of you know, I have a lot of rental houses, and they're all on southern shores. And I, I live here, so it's fortunate that I can check my houses, you know, when they have problems or trash cans out. I'm here to tell you that the renters, you're right, they actually were doing pretty good until this year. They were, I have a lot of repeats, and they come back and back, and they kind of know the routine, says, okay, Monday's trash day, you know, roll them back, and they come back and they do that. So we changed the rules on them, and went, ah! And Southern Shores Realty, who does my rental management, they, they gave them some stickers and stuff like that. No, they're still out, they're still out in the street. I have to roll them back, I do that. It's a pain for me, they're just, it's too much work for them. They're kind of having, trying to have a vacation and being told, you know, here are the owners telling them to bring their trash cans back, you know, it's not very friendly. So, I mean, there's also confusion for recycling, I've got maroon cans, green and yellow cans, blue cans, I think that's recycling, I don't know, regular trash is black and green and another confusion factor for these guys. I mean, we live here, we kind of like know what we got, but they don't. They, they're here for the week or two weeks if we're lucky. Years ago, we had stickers, and I'm recommending as a solution, bring back the stickers, put it on the cans, have the realty, I'll put on mine, or realty companies or owners put them on and say, what, Monday, trash pickup. You know, we can put those on those color cans and, you know, and then we can say the other, on, on this date, you can pick up on Friday. And then recycling, if you want to have one, one that says recycling, Wednesday, recycling, this is what goes in it. Not a little dicky little sign, something big that we can stick on there, that they can get it. You might get a 50% return on that for some stickers on the cans. Simple solution, you worked in the past.
The company does that.
Hmm?
The company did that to mine.
Well, they're, they're, I own my trash cans, by the way, the town doesn't own mine, so I bought on mine. So you can't take my trash can.
The town doesn't own any of them.
Huh?
The town doesn't own any of them.
Correct. So, but I could use some stickers, you know, from the town, you know, for all those kinds of trash.
Well, we got, well, we've got, we've got stickers for you, George.
Big ones? Well, are they out there on the trash cans now? No.
Probably not, but I'm a-
No, they're not, they're not in any of the realty cash cans, I, I buy them, they're not, they're not there. So get the realty companies to put them on, or the homeowners to put them on. I think it'll help the renters, okay? Just because you have them, doesn't mean they're there.
No, we're, we're constantly trying to put them on the cans, so, you know, excuse me for talking.
No, you're good, you're all right. Jerry Sullivan. Good evening, Jerry.
Mayor Bennett, counsel. Jerry Sullivan, I live at 31 10th Avenue. Something happened a little earlier that really disturbed me, and I was trying to decide whether to say anything or not, but I'm just gonna tell you how it appears to the audience. Last week, at the last council meeting, McDonald said something to Nathan, and Jim made a motion, Chris seconded it, and to censure McDonald. And Mayor Bennett, I believe he voted against it, and I thought, I thought it was a done thing. And I didn't see anything on the agenda where the, in the packet, and it appears that two of the other council members were blindsided. It appears that nothing was done illegal, but it appears to me, and I could be wrong, I'd like you to address it in your comments, that you talked to both Mr. Connors and Mr. Nathan and the attorney, and the town manager probably had the, the resolution drafted. And, and you had a whole month to do that, but it didn't make it into the packet. So there was sort of a coup at this meeting. It was a coup. Mr. McDonald didn't have any time to prepare or decide whether he wanted to apologize or not. Mr. Newberry was totally in the dark. And, and it's disturbing to me because that, that speaks to what I call, is that ethical behavior? I don't know. Is that the way we're going to operate in the future if there's something somebody wants to railroad through and keep a couple people in the dark? I would hope not. You know, we, we said, gee, do we need a code of conduct? Well, maybe we do, maybe that's something that we ought to have in a code of conduct. I look to the mayor to bring the council together, and one of the ways you do that is to communicate. And by not communicating, by excluding two of the council members, you sort of sent a signal about how this council's gonna operate. I hope that's not the case, and I hope I was mistaken. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Ann Scherzma.
Good evening, everyone, Ann Scherzma, 69 Hickory Trail. I was gonna talk about renters and recycling cans, but having heard Jerry, I, I want to make one comment on the same point. I was not pleased with the process tonight either. I don't think it was the way you want town council to operate, and it's pretty clear that Mr. Newberry was left in the dark, and certainly the public was as well. We could have seen something in the meeting packet. I don't think it was becoming of any of you to operate this way. But I will have to say that I also think what Gary said was inappropriate. But I will have to say that I also think what Gary said was inappropriate. And that if I were he, I would have apologized. Now, he has his reasons for not having done so. But to have ganged up on him like this and passed a resolution to censor him, it just seems so petty, and so unbecoming, and so undemocratic, the way it was done. So, I'm really kind of appalled that you did it. And I was appalled when Gary said what he did, so I don't think you improved on the situation. But returning to recycling cans, I'll just tell you a little bit about the way renters operate, their behavior. Because I look after four rental cottages, Mr. Berry in the same area over on Ocean Boulevard. And I can tell you that renters don't even think about trash or recycling until they're right, ready to leave, just heading out the door. And then, out comes the can on Saturday morning, and it's full. They don't think about putting out trash on, for Friday pickup. I would be very surprised if anybody has trash out by, by Friday morning. As far as the recycling goes, I think Wednesday is probably the worst day to schedule it. And I can tell you, this past Saturday, I went to check on some of the houses. I arrived at the first house, the recycling was piled high and sitting up next to the house, not on the road. At the second house, where I had left a note for the previous renters to please pull in the last renter's recycling, and to put out their own, it was on the road, half-full. And then, the third house, it was on the road piled high, sky-high in bags, where it will sit until Wednesday. So, I would, I would ask for a better solution than the Wednesday pickup for recycling. Seems like there is no ideal. And the Southern Shores Rental Company, which I work with, does put a sticker on the packet to, to tell renters to please put your recycling out. But they don't pay attention, not until the last minute, and they're heading out the door. Unless you know them personally, or you're pulling in cans yourself, it's a tough situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. This time, I'll close.
Mr. Mayor, there's one more citizen, I'm informed, who wants to speak.
Yes, sir. Just tell us who you are and where you live.
My name's Matt Thede, seventeen Wood Duck Court. I want to thank you, the council, for acting quickly and appropriately for Mr. McDonald's behavior. Thank you very much for what you did today. But I also want to talk about some of the lot coverage and respond to some of the comments by some of the other people. I, I have a problem with lot coverage, and I didn't know it. That it was, it just, you know, I just tried to did some improvements to my lot, and then, all of a sudden, I'm, I'm out of, I'm out of compliance. And the reason is, is the person before me, they added a little gravel, they added some pavers here and there, maybe put a sidewalk or something down, and all of a sudden, I'm out of compliance. And so, now, I have to go and fix all this. And I'm sure that a lot of people have the same situation. Maybe they put brick in front of their driveway, and not realizing that they are out of compliance. Now, I've talked to council members, I've emailed planners, and I've hired a surveyor to try to get my lot coverage in compliance. And they don't really know the rules. They don't know what they are. They're like, it's a guess, I'm not gonna do this because it's not clear. And my understanding is, they brought this up to make the rules clear. But it sounds like some people are taking it personal and making it into a political issue. I'm just trying to get my lot in compliance, that's all I'm trying to do. You know, like I said, the lot, the driveway's a little wider than it was. My neighbor, they have a short driveway, but they're making him, for the calculation of lot coverage, they're making him add seven hundred square feet of his lawn as lot coverage, because somebody believes the law says that the driveway has to be from the road to the house, so they include it. He has a short driveway, backs up and goes out, but the driveway, far as calculation for lot coverage, is all the way up to his house. So, his yard's considered lot coverage. It's grass and sand. It doesn't make any sense. But, so all this confusion, and everybody's like, referring to this survey, which is a survey that I never got, and nobody, I can't even, I don't know anybody that got this survey. No one knows what you're talking about, what the survey is like. But if the council, the planners, and a hired surveyor doesn't understand the law, what's the validity of the survey? If, I mean, I'm sure, I wouldn't have understood it if I did get the survey. I would have never understood that law. And I would have said, yeah, I'm fine with the way it is, because I don't want you guys doing anything. I don't want you making more laws and making things more, I want you to make things clear. And that's what I thought the purpose of this was, and it wasn't a personal thing. And as of the behavior of some of the members, it really sounds like it turned into a personal issue. I'm just trying to get in my lot in compliance, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Can I make a comment?
You just said you'll have a minute, in a minute you can, sure. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I think that really speaks to the need for us all to do our job and to look at this lot coverage seriously. There, Mr. Thede, I would highly recommend that the gentleman behind you, sorry, Glenn. He's on the planning board. The man in front of you, Joe McGraw, he's on the planning board. The guy in front of you, too. And they're meeting on August twentieth. Please go there and relay your concerns to them also. Because if you heard from their last council meeting, we kicked that back to the planning board, so it'll be coming back to us. Yes, and we appreciate your comments. But that is a perfect example of a real-world example where we're leaving people in limbo. But anyway, thanks, thanks for speaking.
Any further business, council? This time, it's time for mayor's comments and responses, and the council members' comments and responses, under other business. In my remarks to you before I brought up this issue of censure, I said it was once something I had, had no intention to have any part of. I felt that one of the most unpleasant things I've had to deal with since I've been elected. I felt at the last meeting that Mr. McDonald was given an opportunity on more than one occasion to say to Mr. Nathan, just simply, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say it that way. I mean, it came out of my mouth wrong. He opted not to do that. He opted not to make any further mention of it. And he lives next door to Mr. Nathan. They're not likely forty miles apart. He took no initiative at all in trying to resolve this. I gave him two chances tonight, two opportunities, lengthy opportunities, where I tried to convince him that the censure doesn't harm him in any way, except from an ego perspective. But he could have said, I'm sorry, Chris, that's the end of it. And that would have been the end of it. I took the action I did, based on my conversation with Mr. Nathan, which is perfectly legitimate. And I asked him, what do you want to do, Chris? He said, I want him to acknowledge that he did something that he shouldn't have done, and just apologize for it. Simple as that. And that's the reason I pursued this, and that's the reason I got involved with it at all, because I felt that one of our council members had been discredited, and he shouldn't have been. Simple as that. I'm not gonna apologize for my actions. I consulted with the town manager, I consulted with the attorney, and I consulted with Mr. Connors. I didn't consult with Mr. McDonald, because he had two opportunities, a number of opportunities to apologize. I didn't consult with Mr. Newberry, because he wasn't directly involved in it at all. He was not directly involved. He didn't even say, he didn't even hear the remarks. So, I'm, that's where it stands, that's my position on it. And I'm, I would, I don't want to ever have to do it again. But I think it's, it's an option we have to consider, regardless who it is. If I'm being uncivil to someone, or making, jeopardizing someone's livelihood, then I need to answer for that. Simple as that. That's my comments and responses. I think council member Nathan first, if you would like to say something.
I don't have a lot to say. I do, I did support the censure, and I would have, I would have much preferred to deal with it the night of the event. And I did try. I'm not perfect. I say stupid things all the time. One need only ask my wife. I say the dumbest things ever. And all I was really looking for was an apology, and unfortunately, that didn't come. We are neighbors, we're gonna be neighbors for a long time. We'll get over this, I know that. You know, so, in that sense, I do feel it's worth, at this point, moving on from a town perspective. I, I didn't appreciate the comments, but I also feel like we've just gotta live and let live at this point, and be done with it.
Thank you, Fred. Fred?
Okay. I was appalled and really disappointed in the process that you took, Tom, in, in doing this so-called censure. Whether the comments were inappropriate or not, that, to me, that's a separate issue. But the fact that three of you conferred, and I was left in the dark, and Gary, the victim of this so-called censure, was also in the dark. I have a real problem with the process, I really do. This is setting a really poor precedent for the future, for us cooperating and working together, knowing that three members are going to work in that kind of manner, and not include the, the other two. I'm, I'm really disappointed, and I'm hoping that maybe there's been a large enough impression made tonight that this won't happen again, and, and that we, we try to include each other in the discussion. And I would prefer the discussion all being in the open here, in a meeting, where the public can hear it as well. And I think we made a big deal out of this. And like I said, it came to me as a complete surprise. I'm appalled, I'm disappointed, but like Chris said, we'll, we'll move on.
Thank you, Fred. Gary?
Let Mr. Connors go ahead.
All right, Jim.
As far as the censure issue goes, I think I've pretty much said everything during the censure discussion. So, I'd like to speak to two other issues. One of them is, is that we had somebody that passed away here recently. I noticed, I don't see anybody from the Outer Banks Sentinel in the audience. Is, is that accurate? Is there anybody from the Sentinel? They did an article about Renata dying. She was a director at the Room at the End. I got to know her, or not know her, but meet her and know of her during my own involvement at Room at the End, just like as the mayor and many others have, you know, may have done. Room at the End, I don't want to give a pitch for that program, but it's basically something to try and help the working homeless during the winter. Renata also got involved in many other activities that were, you know, related to helping people that were, let's say, less fortunate than us. It was a very good example of somebody stepping up to the plate and doing what they could to help her fellow human beings and those in her community. So, she will be missed. It's a shame, always a shame to lose folks like that. The second issue I wanted to bring up was, is that, as I look around the room here, I see quite a number of people that, like I, have to deal with continuing education on a yearly basis to keep professional licenses and certifications current. The one that I did recently, last week, was a seminar in Norfolk on storm drainage management, that, storm drainage management. It dealt specifically with permitting and all kinds of storm drainage design concepts in both Virginia, but more important to me, North Carolina also. They went over the National Pollution Discharge Elimination Program. They went over bio swales, different storm drainage concepts, like the bio swales, low-impact development. And the whole time, the whole day I was sitting there, I'm thinking of sitting up here at the council, because there are so many different things that that knowledge can help, that can be applied toward. Everything from our capital improvements, roads, you know, redesigns and rebuilds, the fire station, infiltration basin at NC-12. It was just one of the best and more applicable continuing ed courses that I've ever taken over the years. And of course, it helps me in my own business also. But anyway, I think it's very beneficial to the town when folks like Chris Nathan, also an architect, sits up here, because he goes through these continuing ed courses also. So, anyway, it's, just thought I'd relay that to everybody.
Thank you, Jim. Gary?
You know, when I came on this council, transparency was an issue that I spoke to. And I'm sorry, but this is continuing. The fact that, the fact that I was discussed in the community, because I know there were members of this community out there who knew this was gonna happen, by three council members and staff. And I was not contacted, or Councilman Newberry was not contacted. Just goes to prove that transparency is not gonna exist on this council. And I didn't know, I didn't have a right to free speech. And I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Any further comments, council? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.